Good evening, can everybody hear me?
Good.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I know we've been here for awhile and it's probably gonna be a long night, but I appreciate a few more minutes to go over some of the things that I've seen in working with our building committee. First, from everything I've read and everyone I've spoken with about the station, the one thing that's clearly evident is the need for a new police facility. No one on either side of the sighting discussion has told me they don't agree with the need. The need for new facilities has been discussed and recognized many times over the last two decades. Being your police chief places me on the Police Building Advisory Committee. In addition to that committee, we formed an internal committee comprised of officers and dispatchers who worked within the station. And as part of that committee, we worked very hard to look at what had previously been done as far as planning for a new station, what had changed, and what we needed to accomplish with a new facility. The facility will be designed to last into the future while keeping costs under the levy limit. It has always been the priority to construct the best police facility we can within a budget that we can afford. Getting the most value for every dollar spent is the only way we can do this. Over the last few decades, there has been an evolution of what the police needs are and what the station would look like. There was a proposal to have a joint police-fire-public safety building, and for reasons before I became chief, that was abandoned for two separate buildings. The current site, as well as the Center Street site, had been looked at and preliminary plans for both were made. It was most recently planned that the police station would be built after the fire station and possibly on the site of the old fire station. At that time, the broad overview of how this would be accomplished was that the old fire station would be demolished while the police remained in the current station. Once the old building was down, a new police station would be built in its place. Upon completion, the police department would occupy the new station and the old police station would be renovated into a training and storage area. On its face, this seems like a very plausible idea. Once you begin to focus in on that plan from a practical standpoint and look at the site constraints to construct a modern police facility for the next 50-plus years, we see that in actuality, the cost and disruption of services are far greater than initially imagined. Construction fencing, demolition and construction activities, storage of materials and equipment on the site will clearly impact our ability to run a police department in the middle of all this. Access to the police building for the public and offices will be compromised. Entrance and egress of ambulances will be disrupted. Difficulty for other town vehicles, including school buses and DPW vehicles, to get to the fuel pumps will occur. Parking and access to the ball fields will be impacted. On top of that, the length of time needed for construction will be increased with a corresponding cost. And finally, we will be constructing a new police facility on a piece of land that is not large enough to provide for several needs of the new police facility. Most importantly, we would not be able to have a secure rear area where cruisers and officers' vehicles may be parked, an impound area where seized vehicles, not just towed disabled vehicles, but seized evidence vehicles can be stored securely, and a training area where officers can train on and maintain skills needed to respond to crisis situations that are only becoming more prevalent in today's age. When we, as the Police Building Advisory Committee, were charged with the process to move forward with the design and construction of the new facility, we looked at what the previous committee had done, at the previous plans and studies, including the Collins Center report. What we learned was prior to the Collins Center report, there had been two sets of conceptual drawings made of a possible station that could be placed on the site of the old fire station while the police department continued to operate out of the old station. Again, this was a broad overview of a plan with little specific detail as to how it would be accomplished. At the time the Collins Center became involved, they were tasked to look at the plan and the financial ability to accomplish the plan. Certainly, their thoughts were that the plan and the financial strategy to pay for it appeared to work well. Again, I will state that this is a broad overview of a plan without specific detail as to how the police station portion would be completed. At that time, the cost of the new police station was slated at $7.5 million. The Collins Center presentation at the special town meeting in November 2013 was helpful in getting the process moving. A vote to approve the bond secured the necessary funding for the new fire station. A little bit about the Collins Center is I had just become your chief in July of 2013 and helped to secure a tour of the station by the Collins Center, but had very little input to that as I had not been involved in the formal planning of the building committee earlier. I didn't know much about the Collins Center, and when we started this program, I contacted them and I learned about their report and was surprised to find out that the study they did for us was unique to their agency, and it was the only study that they've ever done on a police and fire station sighting area. I think they did an excellent job at looking at the financial ability to complete the project, but I believe that their expertise on the actual sighting of it was lacking, and I respectfully disagree with some of their points on that. A great deal of work has been done in the past by the first building committee, including a sound financial plan and possible plans for the police station. This hard work moved the ball down the field a good distance. The current building committee has picked up their ball and continued the charge. Since 2013, we've conducted two additional studies. These studies were completed to ensure we had the most up-to-date and relevant information regarding the department and its needs into the future. First, the MRI study took a look at the police department as a whole, its structure, complement of officers, calls for service, and growth into the future. This study involves citizen participation in analysis of their thoughts of the department. We had a SWAT meeting and invited a diverse group of 50 residents to look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats (SWAT) of what our police department needed to evolve into from a community perspective. The study, among other things, that the department will -- the study found, among other things, that the department will grow in the future and confirmed the need for a new facility designed to meet Carver's future needs. Secondly, once our architect was hired, a space needs assessment was conducted. That looked at the functions that occur within our police department and what space would be required to perform those functions. Surprisingly, we found the current police station is too small. The one imperative that the current committee faced was coming up with a way to build a new facility within a budget that was determined back in 2013. That's $7.5 million that I mentioned. That's what we need to accomplish to stay under the levy limit. To accomplish this task, the committee and the architect designed a building that included all necessary functions with no extras, and that will likely fit in that budget. The current design uses an outbuilding which can be built more cost-effective than the main building and can be used for storage of items that do not need to be inside the station itself. Further, it incorporates a secure rear parking lot area for cruisers, officers' vehicles, and impounded vehicles. That rear area will also be used to conduct critical officer training, similar in ways to what is done at the fire station. The committee looked at several sites, including the current site of the station, behind the EMS station, the Center Street property, and Pond Street. The plan to build a new station on the site of the old fire station and current station was rejected for reasons including insufficient land size to accommodate the needs of the new facility, disruption of services while demolition and construction are carried out, and extra costs which could exceed $1 million associated with trying to accomplish the project. The location behind EMS station was also did not provide enough land, was not located directly on Route 58, and has a septic system in the way. Pond Street was rejected because it was not located on Route 58 for visibility and is not centrally located to both schools. In making the recommendation to locate the new police facility on the Center Street property, the committee considered that the location is centrally located between both schools, has excellent visibility on Route 58 directly across from the fire station, which may help us with communication and radio tower savings, backs up to a wooded area for privacy and security of police vehicles, including undercover vehicles, and allows for training to occur with little impact to the public. We have recognized that this recommendation, recommending this location would mean that the playground would need to be relocated. And as Mr. Harriman stated, that was a very difficult decision to come from. Your police department has spent, your police officers have spent the last six years working diligently to improve not only our community image but how we interact with our youth and what efforts we put forward for that. We've done many, many programs with the youth, and it's very, they're very important to us. While both locations are centrally located and have clear sighting from Route 58, only the Center property provides the recommended acreage of 2.5 to 3 acres as specified not only by the current architect but as cited in the 2005 Police Stations Needs Assessment Study. That acreage will provide the ability for the secure rear yard that is necessary for the reasons cited above. The 112 Main Street location does not provide this ability. The cost of relocating the playground from the Center Street site is far less than the potential costs associated with attempting to demolish a building and reconstruct a new one while leaving the current building in operation. Additionally, the idea that we can continue to run the police department's daily operations out of a building in the middle of a construction site is not the best way to move forward. That said, to try to construct the building on that site would require the temporary relocation of the department during the process, and it'll be throwing money away to stay open while we can build a facility off-site and move into it once it's completed, just like the fire station and the elementary school were done. Relocating of the department will be a very large expense and one that is a net loss. As for other issues, including the legal opinion of Article 97 question and the well-protection zones, these have been vetted by the town's attorney and the building design and construction professionals respectively. Their advice further confirms the Center Street location is the correct location. It is my advice that the building, that building the police station on the Center Street location and relocating and building a brand-new playground gives the town the most value for the dollars spent and is the best option to remain within the existing budget for construction of the facility. It is the most economic option and provides the most police services for our community. My advice comes from my 24 years of law enforcement experience with the last five and a half as your chief. My time working in the current building, my time on the building committee, and all the knowledge that has come from visiting new stations, including stations under construction, and discussions with our architect, owners' project manager, town council, and other chiefs who built new stations. I'd like to conclude with these thoughts. I have the utmost respect for the voters in this room, and I know that after listening to everyone tonight, the voters will conclude that this is the right plan for the department and for the community. Whatever the vote tonight, our offices, as always, will remain ready to do their jobs and protect this community. I would like to ask you to please vote yes on this article tonight. Thank you.
Thank you to the Police Station Building Advisory Committee for putting together the presentation for us. So with that said, I'm gonna open the article up for debate. And actually, while that debate is taking place as well too, we did notice that a few voters were sitting in the non-voting section. That's the entire square in the upper left-hand corner, my upper left-hand corner back here. So if you are a voter and you're sitting in the non-voters section, please move to pretty much anywhere else in the room. Thank you. Yes?
Kim Shea, 148 Plymouth Street. I'd like to make a motion to take the agenda out of order for the purpose of voting Article 4 prior to voting on this Article 2. This will basically allow those who attend.
Ms. Shea, I have to interrupt you. So we have a motion on the table right now for Article 2. So that would have to have been made while there was no business on the table.
Well, I tried, but everybody just jumped in, then the presentation started, and I wasn't able to do it, and I --
There was a slight pause.
I had given this to you ahead of time.
Yes, and I said that you would have to make the motion when there was no business on the table, preferably between Articles 1 and Article 2. There was a pause between Articles 1 and Articles 2. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Dan Ryan, 14 Lillian Way. I have a couple of slides I'd like to have put up if Mr. Villanowski wouldn't mind.
Put up Mr. Ryan's slides.
Next slide, please.
I just want to point out too, we're happy to put slides up on the screen for any individuals when we get them in advance, as Mr. Ryan has done. I just want to be clear that because they're on the screen does not mean that they represent the views of anyone sitting in front of you here. These represent Mr. Ryan's own views, his own opinions and findings, and not those of the Police Station Building Advisory Committee. He alone created this presentation, and we have left it unedited as it was given to us. So Mr. Ryan, you have the floor.
I served as chairman of the library building committee, and as such, we needed to find a new site. And so this part of it, there was a, there were two sites that were being looked at. One was in North Carver, but then the Robey property at Center Street became available. I wanted to keep the library in the center of town, so I was a proponent of purchasing the property that we call the Robey property of the Center Street just for keeping the library in the center of town, but it was also intended for multi-use. And we did complete the library, and it was dedicated in 1997. Next slide, please. So this was the article that was voted on. So a couple technical points that I want to bring up here that are important. So we called it the Robey property. This was a special town meeting, June 29, 1994. So we acquired the land for the purpose of, number one, the library. That's why we did it. Number two, it was a recreational facility. So it's not a playground. There's like multiple acres there. It was purchased for the town as a recreational facility, and we said in the future, in the future for municipal buildings. Next slide, please. So what happened is the recreational facility got going, so town meeting supported it, over $163,000. So in 1999, Article 10 voted $25,000 to get it started. And then at annual town meeting, Article 17 was another $90,000. So right there, $115,000 town meeting spent to establish the recreational facility. But what's important is they came back and updated in 2014 with CPC money. And when they use the CPC money, they also use state funds. So that's a technicality that might impact us in trying to get rid of that facility because state funds were used, and that has to be answered in order for us to move forward. Next slide, please. So it's over 2 acres, there's walking trails in a wooded area, which is beautiful. It's got an exercise fitness circuit, playground structure. It's got all the safety surfacing, the ADA, the picnic tables, the parking lot, the fencing. And again, the taxpayers supported that for over $163,000. Plus, thousands of dollars in citizen and business donations were also donated for that recreational facility. Next slide, please. So along came the need for the elementary school, police, and fire. So the town, I also served as the chairman of the town building study committee. So at the time, we needed to evaluate all the buildings in town, not just the police, not just the fire. We did that, and as part of that, I see Roger here and Steve Pratt. We worked very hard. We put as much effort in, as I can tell you, as everybody else's work in behalf of the town. And so with that, we came up with a mechanism to fund the building facilities within the levy limit, which is why we're actually here today, because we enabled us to be able to do that. But as part of that, we work with the Collins Center. Next slide, please, and I have to talk fast because of this unless I ask you for permission to finish this presentation.
We're actually out of time, so if you have one more sentence, I'll allow it. These are the rules that we just voted in, so. I have a motion to extend the limits of debate. Okay.
It could have been done by now.
Okay, this is going to be a two-thirds vote. Do I have any debate? Seeing no motion towards the mics, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of, oh, actually, the motion did not clearly state how long the debate should be extended, so can we clarify that? Okay. The motion, as stated, is to allow him to continue and finish his presentation. All right, so I will now accept a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? If the ayes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Ryan, please continue your presentation.
All right, so as part of the town building study committee, we engaged with the Collins Center, as you heard tonight, and they did a very in-depth study of the police and fire facilities. It was independent, and we brought them in from the outside. They reviewed all the prior studies that have been done to date. They interviewed with the police, the fire, and everybody. You know, all the town officials, the school, to put all this information together. They toured all the facilities, and they reviewed every piece of town property that we had at the time to look at what the best possible site was for this. Next slide, please. So, and what we presented at town meeting, as you heard tonight, is that 99 Main Street was the best street for the, best location for the fire station. That whole meeting enables to move forward, and that's why we have a beautiful fire station today. And so the next part that came out of it, which I think is important, and we've touched upon this a little bit tonight, they felt that 112 Main Street was the best site for the police station at the time because of all the limitations on the other sites. Also, they were told that they, the police and fire wanted direct access. They wanted to be right on Main Street. They didn't want to be anywhere else because you may have to put lights in and the safety factors and things like that. They also wanted to see improvement of the existing site. What are we gonna do with that site once we're done? Next slide, please. So the wells were the issue here, so we have an aquifer there. And so what I think is important here, and I haven't heard tonight, is the Department of Environmental Protection has to weigh in on this. We could spend all this money, and they could come and stop us cold and say, "You're done." Because you have to have a radius around that. And we, and I'll address this in my conclusion so I can move on. And then the next one was the visibility issues that we felt you might have to put lights in there all over the place so you can get access to the particular site. So moving on to the next slide, and this is my conclusion. So it was the town wells. That's what their, that was their main point of all the sites that they looked at. That was the biggest impacter because you not only have to protect that, you can't be putting vehicles back there and all kinds of stuff. It's on an aquifer, it serves the town's water here. So what they basically said is that you want that, and also we have to reserve it for expansion too. We can't cut ourselves too short. So I don't think the Department of Environmental Protection has weighed in yet because we've added the police station, you know, we've added other facilities, you know, such as the affordable housing and the senior housing, and they haven't been back to do a study yet. They need to come back and do a pump test and test this and tell us if the radius still makes sense. And I'd be willing to bet we're at its limit, and they want to expend that. So I don't want to spend town meeting dollars and have the DEP come back and say, "Oh, you guys are done, you just wasted your money, so, you know, go rethink this." And especially after we tear everything down. That would be, that would be a waste of taxpayer money. So the other thing is that because the recreational facility was established with the "and" clause and used in state funding, that's a big issue too that we could get stopped for as a project. So I think that was, you know, and you already invested money in it. So all that came down to the fact that even though we have to deal with disruption, and I bet the school system will help us with that because we just went through all that across the street, and we survived, we're done, it's beautiful. So I think that, you know, you need to, those two points are very important because we don't want to waste money unless those things are done. And if we're looking at an additional training facility, I don't remember that being in the original scope of what we voted on. That could always be done through another article, and there's plenty of town property too, by the way. We have like 26 acres over by the DPW that could all be utilized for excess if we needed it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Villan.
I've been quite vocal on this of where I stand. I am pro our playground, it needs to stay there, it's a great place. The police station in the position that we have here can be moved over, and we still have our playground. That's my biggest fear, is that we lose that playground, and the relocation, it's not the same size. They say it's the same size, but it's really not. It's smaller. They said that there's walking trails in the back, but how many people are gonna walk around there when you got a police station right there in the library? And there's nearly not much because it'll be gone, a majority of it. The police station, visibility, they say it's a big thing about visibility. All right, and I've said this before, is signage helps a lot for visibility. Okay, when I come off of Route 3 to go to work, I see a big blue sign there, and it's really not that big because it's only like that big by this big, that says "Police" that way for Plymouth. Then you see a big blue light standing over there. You know that's a police station. So signage for visibility, it's gonna be there because they're gonna put signs along Route 58 right at the entrance of Center Street. So the building can be moved over. Like my previous speaker said, if they need other space, Rochester Road is a vacant lot except for one little building out there. All right? If they need other space for training or other purposes, there's another availability. Pond Street, I think, is a great opportunity to have one police station there too. It's not in the center of town, yeah. But again, with signage, it can help. Other towns have gotten their police stations away from the center of town because of congestion and trying to get in and out and whatnot. I think with this plan, the way it is here, is that they're still gonna have an issue getting in and out because it's coming around that curve, all right? And them trying to go out, if they try to go down Center Street, I think there's gonna be an issue there too if they gotta leave in a hurry. So I just think it's wrong. I think we need to keep this playground where it is, move the police station over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villan. On my left.
Thank you, my name is Peg Hayes. I live at 144 South Main Street in South Carver. Building on some of what the past two gentlemen were speaking of, I have grave, I have a lot of concern that we're gonna go forth, vote for this, and then we're gonna find out that legally it can't happen in terms of putting the police station where the playground is. I moved here in 1985 after having my first child. She was two weeks old, we moved here. We raised another child together. My husband and I have been here all these years. Now I've got a grandchild, I've got my mom and dad living with us. This playground park community center is a gem. It will not be able to be duplicated, no matter what anyone says. It will be impossible to get, to show, to do what is there anywhere else. That has to be owned. It's the truth. A lot of us have issues, and I am, I absolutely support the police. I absolutely, I always have, I always will. I resent greatly, greatly, being told that I am anti-police because of my passion for our playground. I've been one of the people who has tried to be vocal. I've tried to be vocal on Facebook, different places. Recently, I was accused of staging an outing with my granddaughter and her best friend on their bikes on training wheels. I was actually accused of staging it because I took a few pictures. I love our playground, I love our town, I love our children. I do love our police department and our fire department. I am not trying to be a troublemaker. I believe this is a failed or flawed plan, and I believe that the potential for things to go wrong if we go forth and vote this today are huge. Between the legalities, between the wells, between the potential for there being other issues that have to do with keeping the land recreational, and a lot of these things I don't know a lot about. All I do know is it seems rushed, and there are many of us who feel that we had been baited and switched. Whether or not that's the truth, that is the feeling of many of us. Thank you for hearing me, and good luck.
Where on my right?
Paul Johnson, 3 Laurie Lane in Carver. I don't often get up and speak on behalf of a building project. Don't have a history of doing that. But the words that I heard that make me support this, "cost-effective, under the levy limit." The other things that I've noticed over the years is Chief Dufulley is not a politician. He's a manager. He's a doer. He's quiet. He's respectful. He's earned our trust. We've got an architect that says that this is the best site. If they have input pertaining to the wells and things, that's what they get paid for. That's what the building study committee gets paid for. They've brought to us a cost-effective project that's worthy of a department that's made huge improvements since the late 1990s. We owe those people a building that's commensurate with the kind of improvement they've given us. So please, support Chief Dufulley and the police station because it's cost-effective, because it's under the levy limit, and because they've earned it.
Again, I just want to remind folks to hold your applause. I really appreciate your enthusiasm, but just to kind of keep things moving along tonight. On my left. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I did not see you back there. So, we'll recognize the gentleman in the back.
Kevin Sullivan, 138 High Street, Carver. Would I like to suggest that before we go any further, we get the EPA ruling on the, the infringement on the wells and the other legalities from that might come up as opposition that we get stuck with after it's all approved.
Okay. On my left.
My name is Jane DiMaggio Brooks. I live at 140 Center Street. The thing that I think has been left out is that that park is not just a park. It is the jewel of this town. Every child, I've lived here since 1995. I've raised my daughters here. I've raised my, my grandchildren go to that park. I think the thing that's been really troubling and very sad is the fact that I feel as though we are being sought to seem like we're against the police. We are not against any of the police here. At least, I can speak for myself. I've always supported the police in this town. I think that we're rushing this with all due respect. I think that the wells have to be number one, then the children, and then we talk about what is appropriate for a police department in this town because I think that it's due, the time to take, to do that. I also think that, I also think that we have to really, really be mindful of what it's going to do to these children in this town because they're really, and there isn't anything for these children other than that park and the ball fields. We've done this high school over. The kids are doing really well in sports and all that. I feel as though if you pull that park and then they have no park or nowhere to play for, we don't even have a date as to when the park will be put together. I think it needs to be considered, and I think that the wells need to be number one.
Thank you. Again, on my left.
Jen Dowding, 39 William Street. I also have the opportunity of going to the park with my little girls. I don't have, I don't share the same view because I, they love the park. I don't. I don't like the mulch. I spend most of my time looking in the mulch for sharps, actually, because of being on Carver Cares. I worry about that. I think that it needs to be updated. I think that it barely meets ADA approval, and I think that we could do better. I think the elementary school playgrounds are fabulous and they meet ADA approval perfectly. And I have a lot of friends that can't go to the park because they have wheelchairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please hold your applause. On my right.
Dagmar Ryan, 14 Lilian Way. I met with Police Chief Doofly. We had a long conversation, and I absolutely agree with him that he believes that that Center Street site is the best site. I believe he believes that, and I believe he believes the people who he trusts. I'm going to be practical. It is a great playground. It's a great spot. It's more than a playground. It's irreplaceable, but I'm being more practical. I'm thinking that building, that the design or design for the police station is perfect because they love that building. It's right there. But that building is a building, and you can move that building right over TBD, which is really what's bothering me. The TBD is the old fire station, which was deemed to be, you know, like, let's get rid of it. That was the whole idea. So, I don't know why we're saving that, and if you notice, the police station is missing from there. So, a few things, red flag for me is that why can't we move the building, just the way it is with all the functions, over to the TBD? And then, we can take the training center with that impound. We'll have vehicles with oil and jet skis and things that could pollute the wells. We can move all those, that area and that storage building over to Pond Street and they can, I think, what I'm getting is a compromise. Nothing's perfect, and I'm looking for a win-win situation. This is, and voting no for this does not mean that the ball fields can't have a play area. Voting no means that we do not destroy the park that is really irreplaceable. Voting no does that mean that the police station does not get a building that he wants? And I think that architect is talented enough to figure it out, to make a few adjustments to put that building, as you see there, over the TBD. And you know what? The five-year-olds dealt with the construction at the elementary school. People deal with construction. I went to Plain Jane's Cafeteria Cafe, and they're doing construction of the airport. We built a school in like less than a year. I think we can build a 12,000-square police station. And this is, like I said, all due respect for Mr. Doofly and Chief Doofly, and he brought these things up. So, I think we can, and I also know events happened today which confirmed for me that police business is not brick and mortar. It's in the community, and I know some of you know what I'm talking about. So, I think that we should consider a compromise because it's a waste of money to try to replicate something that doesn't need to be replicated. So, yeah, is it the best spot? I think we need compromise, and we think we should look at putting it back at 112 Main Street.
Hold your applause, please. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. And in the middle.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Marshall Hewlett. I live at 4 Bruce DeRev. I've lived in Carver since 2002. I also work for Mass DEB, which is the Department of Environmental Protection. I do not work in the Division of Water Supply, which I agree, someone probably should be consulted about this. I will say that I did get a phone call from the Board of Selectmen asking me the specific question about the public water supply well and if anything can go within that public water supply well. I talked to my counterpart in the Division of Water Supply, and absolutely nothing other than the pump house, which is already back there behind the police station, I'm sorry, behind the parking lot for the library or the playground, nothing can go in that Zone 1. That is a protected area. So, if we're looking at expanding or doing anything else as far as police training or anything in that area, that is, that is going to be a no for Mass DEB. I think the way you have this set up now, it looks okay. I truly do support the police and Chief Doofly. I love the playground also. I'm also for environmental protection. So, if the way this is slotted currently works and we don't need, or we're projecting that we don't need something in the future for expansion, I think this works. But again, that area that's around that public water supply well, you cannot have any activity in that area that does not have to do with the well itself. So, traveling to the well, anything that has to do with that public water supply well. So, I just wanted to hopefully explain a little bit about that and clarify.
Through the moderator, could I, so, we have not had a study done.
Hold on, I didn't, I didn't recognize.
Okay, sorry.
So, what's your, is it's a point of order or?
Well, I'd like to, is, could I, could I make a point on, on what's being said relative to, well, can I, well, recognize me when it's my turn to speak and then I'll.
Okay, I have some other people to recognize first.
All right.
Ms. Foran.
Hi, I'm Donna Marie Foran, 278 South Meadow Village in Carver. So, I just wanted to address you guys. One thing that I've been going to a lot of the meetings, I've attended the site visits, and something that was just brought to my attention tonight that if I hear the chief correctly, that the Collins reported was the very first time they'd ever done a police station? Okay, so that was very good information for me, and it actually gave me more confidence that I will vote yes for this. And then, secondly, the playground itself, I had had a parent call me, and they're not able to bring wheelchairs out to the present playground right now. And I don't know how many of you have children have lugged a carriage across those wood chips. It's very difficult to do, so it is not accessible for every generation. We have people with walkers that cannot use that playground presently to watch their grandchildren. So, think about how you are voting and vote for every generation, not just for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foran. On the left over here.
Bill Harriman, 55, Bill Harriman, 55 Home Street. I don't want to lose my one chance here, but I do want Brian Humes to address the DEP issue. I think that is a very critical issue, the water supply, and he has dealt with DEP on this. So, I would ask Brian to say a couple of words if you would.
So, the question, there's a question directed at Mr. Humes. So, Mr. Humes, I'll give you the floor.
Behind the proposed Center Street site, there is a municipal water supply, and it is not just one well. There are multiple wells that are behind the area. If you look at the master plan, you see a radius that's drawn with a dotted line. The radius that's drawn with the dot in the middle, that's the location of the closest municipal well to this property. The dotted line around that dot is the Zone 1 that was referenced, that's 250-foot radius. Nothing's allowed within that circle. When the library was expanding, you see where they put the large parking lot for the library, and when the library was being constructed, they constructed the parking lot right up to the dotted line. They didn't cross the dotted line, but they went to it. This proposal stays 75 feet away from the dotted line. The proposed septic system for the police department is going to be in the front yard, approximately as far away from the well as the existing library's septic system. We're aware of everything that's been talked about. We're aware of the situation. We're aware of the conditions, and we've addressed them in this plan. So, we are further away from that dotted line than when the library was constructed. That, that is the requirement that you have in Carver. It's the requirement that we had when we constructed the Norwell Police Department in Norwell, Massachusetts. It was a similar condition, similar radius, and we were allowed to go to the dotted line, do not cross. In, in Norwell and in Carver, we're respecting the requirements of the DEP, and we are very conscious of maintaining water quality. The water that's going to be provided to the Carver Police Department is the water coming from those municipal wells. So, we, yes, we do preserve that, and we are concerned about that. So, that was addressing the well condition in the DEP.
Thank you, Mr. Humes. On the left.
Good evening. Robert, 30 Priscilla Mullins Way. Want to talk about two things real quickly. First off, we hire professionals for a reason. I just heard someone talking about TBD and being practical and spending money. I'm not sure if anybody in here has ever tried to move a dispatch center, a center that's open 24/7/365. I have, and I can tell you to do something like this, you're looking at almost a million dollars. My town just did it. It's a tremendous undertaking. That was just for a dispatch center. That's not trying to move a police station, trying to move a lobby, trying to move a lockup and everything else that's involved. Secondly, the town I work in moved our police station off the main road. I can tell you, it doesn't work that well. Signage doesn't work that well because I can tell you that most people looking for the police station end up at the fire station. Thank you.
Thank you. And on my right, Mr. Ryan.
All right. Dan Ryan, 14 Lilian Way. That radius was drawn before we added the new fire station and before we added the affordable housing and senior center. So, what you're looking at is old. So, when we go back to the, the DEP, we need to show them that we've now added a, we've already added a fire station, and we've put the affordable housing in the senior center, which means that radius could get bigger. That's what my point was, is we have not gone back to the DEP to say, "Hey, look what we're doing here. You need to reevaluate this." And also, it's limiting our ability to ever expand it in the future. But I think the more important point is that radius could be bigger now. You, we're going on old information, so you should probably ask the board, is did they go back to the DEP and get an update from them? I don't think that's happened yet. That was my point, is that you need, all the diligence they've done, we haven't gotten the DEP to do a new study to tell us that that should be increased because of the new fire station. We're going to be adding a bigger police station, and we have the affordable housing and the senior center. So, all that is going to factor into this thing, and we haven't done it yet. So, that was my main point. And to Mr. Johnson, anything we build is going to be within the levy limit. We're not asking to increase taxes. The funds are already set. So, whatever gets built on whatever site has to stay within the levy limit.
Again, I'll just ask folks not address other individuals directly. Thank you. In the center, yes. Ms. Nowen.
Gail Nowen, Old Main Street. Just, I'll start by reiterating that I think this plan, it's too soon. The town has only been aware of it since December of, so, it's five or six months, maybe? I haven't done the math, but we've taken longer for the school, for sure. We've taken decades. It may be the solution that we're looking for, but there's too many problems with it right now. The other thing I want to stress is I hope that when people came to this meeting tonight, pretty much, people probably have made up their minds. But I'm hoping with everything that got said, people became aware of things that might make them change their mind or think about tabling this. Now, if we table it, I don't know the procedure, whether we have to wait another whole year or maybe we could do something in three months or have a ballot. It's just too many problems with it. I'll bring out, I'll be a little nitpicky with this. The man that presented the proposal said, "It's a hardship backing up your car in a diagonal place in the library." I thought, "You're going to the library? Do you know what happens when you go into a library? You go, you go, you relax. It's, it's not an area they go in and out in, you know, this crazed way. It's, and the playground is a part of that. It's, it, there's an atmosphere there." And that's not a good argument. We have to have this so that you can come in and out and, I don't know. But anyway, so, that's pre-incidental, but please consider.
I ask people, please quiet down while the speaker is talking.
Maybe they're hearing my passion, right? Anyway, please consider what's being said, and please consider possibly tabling this until we really get the information. It's just too short a time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nowen. I'm a little confused on this side over here. I think you guys switched. You guys switch over. All right, so, we'll go to the left.
Ellen Ponfret, 159 Tremont Street. When it comes to IT, I'm kind of a dinosaur. Most people that know me, that know I've worked with me before, and one thing, I'm sorry. When it comes to IT, I'm kind of a dinosaur. I was around with the floppy disk that used to send to AOL. And I've watched this town grow, not just in IT, in the school, but in the town, the police, the fire, and not just in Carver, in some other towns as well. Now, one thing that has not been mentioned here today is that Carver is one of the first police departments in the state to go next gen. How many here know what next gen is? I don't know if I can address you as an audience or not. Next gen means when I call.
Please speak in the microphone.
I'm sorry. Next gen is when I call 911 and I need help, I don't go to a dispatch in New Bedford. I go right to Carver. It knows how to route my phone. We did that for Grumpy. We did that for many people in the state, when they can dial 911, but they can't speak. And we're lucky to have Carver to do that. To move that dispatch, you know, leave the technology in place, that's deplorable. It's not good for our welfare. It's not good for our students' welfare. It's not good for the emergency department. for the emergency department. I don't know if that's been said, I didn't see it in anybody, that we are next gen. The state has not completed this. Carver has. And to tear that down, even for a day, I think would be a shame. To rock, to build it at 112. It needs to go to a new building so it can run in Tangem, until that new building and next gen is up and running for 911. And that's very important, that could save somebody's life. I don't, I know the playground's very important, but if your loved ones out there, or you need 911, you will want that immediately. You won't be saying, "I want to wait till next year, or let's think about it a little longer." We should be proud that Carver is one of the first towns in the state to get that done. There's no way that, that line should be interrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I don't know which one of you two, all right.
What's that? I'd defer to a member of the police committee.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the opportunity to be heard. My name is John Deli Pescoli, I reside at 18 South Main Street, Carver. I've had the honor to serve on three building committees, the fire station, and the school, and the police station that's in front of us tonight. I'd like to step back for a minute, so the folks in the room can understand, that these projects, when you're sitting on these committees, we go in here with an open mind, and we look at all the opportunities in front of us, all the options. Now, if you look at the school, for an example, there was multiple locations for the school, there was multiple plans drawn, there was, it was basically determined that we were going to remodel that school. Had we done that, and had we looked backward, instead of forward, which is what we're doing now with the police station, this town would be paying $12 million more than what we're paying now for that school. This committee, and the folks in front of you here, worked diligently to bring the best product to this town. We're doing that here with this, with this police station. I'm one of the few people here in business, there's others, but back in 2000, I think it was approximately 2000, Edenville, which is, I'm involved in, made a substantial donation to that park that we're discussing tonight. But that didn't cloud my vision. What I see for Carver is I see a golden opportunity here to look at this entire area here as a way to bring forward and look forward, as a way, bold, forward design. We've hired the best possible people in the business, with fully, in all due respect to Mr. Ryan, who's a terrific member of the building committee that I work with, but I have to respectfully disagree. We have fully vetted this project. We went in this, it would be so much simpler to say it belongs somewhere else, and 99% of the discussion tonight would be moot. But the reality is, this is where it belongs. This is where the police chief wants it. And this is where the selectmen, the supermajority of the selectmen, the finance committee, our group, and the consultants we've hired want it. We need to support these people and the police chief. We all went into this understanding that they are the experts. And I can assure this town, and the body here tonight, and the people at home, that we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that this comes in within budget, and do the best job we can for the town of Carver. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to go to the right.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Stephen Pratt, 16 Weston Street. I've reserved a lot of my public comment on this, just wanting to watch and see how this progressed, see where this committed, because it is important. I spent many hours, you know, volunteering with scouts, you know, at, at the playground. You know, my sons didn't really get a chance to utilize the playgrounds, because, you know, they're, you know, and they're over 30, and, when they were doing, even my younger son, you know, we had, we had a playground in our backyard, and that's what a lot of folks did that moved here. The important thing is, is that, you know, we've relied upon the committees to give us our best sites. And the Collins Center, their primary purpose, when they were brought in, was to validate our financial and our funding mechanism. That was the purpose of the Collins Center. And I respect Mr. Ryan, I've known Mr. Ryan for over 30 years, you know, and I appreciate him, and I appreciate Dagmar, so much what they've done for this community. It's, you know, Dan's lived here his entire life, and he's been on more committees, and he and I have been on more projects together than probably either one of us want to tell our wives. But, you know, the important thing is, is that, you know, when, when, when we were deciding what to do with the playground, you know, everything like that, we had just renovated the town hall. We had just built the new library to replace the sheet metal building that's where the gazebo's located. And late 90s, we had to do something in this town to take care of the overcrowded Governor John. So we put the sixth grade wing on this building for 200 sixth graders that we moved here, because the Governor John was busting at the seams, and Ben Ellis was on its way out. And so when it came to decide to build the first community playground, because we didn't have one, it was, it was the most logical place, where Dan and all the folks that worked on getting the Robie property, which for all of us who were here in the early 90s, remember it was Robie's Hardware. We'd go there and get our hardware, because that was the only place we could go, you know, you know, there was no Home Depots, and there were no Lowe's, you know, we had Robie. And, you know, so we, we put the playground where it made sense to be, because we weren't building any other buildings, we were done. We just built three buildings. We weren't going to put another building anywhere. So the decision really came to where it was. And I think even all the studies have indicated 112 and 99, this group took a fresh look at it, and I think we really need to think about what our future's going to be, and I propose, I accept where they're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Over here on the right.
Patricia Darmu, 6 Mayflower Road. I've lived here for over 41 years. I remember when I helped volunteer at the, make the playground at the Governor John Carver before this one. I've been in the police station. I couldn't believe we have a 2x4 when you walk in. And I love our playground. But if I was going to do something to my house and my land, I would make sure every I was dotted, every T was crossed. I do not feel comfortable that I have gotten an answer if there was a DEP study. Was there a study done? Is it that bad to stop and do that one last thing to make sure? That's my question.
So are you, are you directing that question to someone from the committee?
I don't know who to direct it to, to be honest with you. A member of the committee? Can anyone answer, was a study done? Because I cannot vote yes unless there's a study done. Same as I couldn't do something to my house without doing it properly, because we know you pay the consequences if you didn't do 110%. I think you guys have done 109%. I'm looking for that last percent, please.
Okay, thank you. I believe, I believe the question was already answered, but I'm going to allow the police station building advisory committee to, to give it another shot.
I'll try to address that. As far as the DEP study, DEPs don't come in and give studies. DEPs have rules and regulations. DEP has things you have to work within, and if you go on the DEP website, they have all their current information available with their rules and regulations. So for the DEP to come down and do a study is not a requirement at this point of the process. They will have to review this, they will have to give their approvals. Based on the DEP website, current information is a 250-foot radius. That's a standard Zone 1 radius, and what was stated earlier about it may expand, it may be exceeded. If it may be expanded and exceeded, it's going to impact the library before it impacts this proposal. But there's very little likelihood that the DEP will be expanding their Zone 1 in this area, because it's based on volume of water. With all the expansion, the same pumps are going to be there, you're not looking to expand pumps, you're not looking to expand capacity, you're not looking to expand water volume, you're not looking to expand anything to do with the equipment. So without that improvements, the water that's coming out of those wells is going to be maintained at the current pump, current capacities, maintaining the current radiuses. Those are the rules and regulations of the DEP that we are going to satisfy, and we're also going to get approvals at the time of submission for zoning approvals and project approvals. The project still has a ways to go. We're looking to get approval on this property for this use. We're not here with all our local approvals either. We're not here with zoning approvals, we're not here with planning board, we're not here with any of those approvals. We're looking to say, have us utilize this site. We've undertaken the review on all the rules and regulations. We're showing the radius, we're showing the well locations, we're aware of the situations, and we're aware of our approvals to go forward. We're confident that we're going to meet those requirements and rules and regulations and gain all approvals.
Thank you.
So as far as the DEP study, that's not in the purview of the DEP, they don't come down and do studies.
Thank you, Mr. Humes. Ms. Ryan.
Few things. I wanted to speak to Ms. Dowd regarding the ADA on the playground. That mulch is a five-bar, it's very expensive, it was updated in 2015. It's, the ADA says that what you need, and it's supposed to be compact, so you could put wheelchairs over it, and it does have a, the outside asphalt away from the wells. I believe the new playground proposed by the ball fields is also saying that, that surfacing that's at the back of the school is extremely expensive and cost prohibitive, and I don't believe that they plan on putting any of that in the new ball field. So I just wanted to address that mulch problem. Also, I believe the Collins Center was saying that the police station would stay in business for those few months when they needed to. No, I don't, I think that if you got rid of the police, I mean, the fire station with the TBD, you could work around the police station, other people have done it, nobody's saying you have to move the 911. One thing about the 112 site, it's known, we know what's at the 112 site, it's got the utilities, it's got the asphalt, there's no questions about it. So, you know, what I'm saying is, like, split it up, put the training center somewhere else, but give him the building that he likes, put the building, you couldn't get any more visible than 112 Main Street. No, I'm not a professional, professional is someone who gets paid for what they do, just volunteered, and we've, many other people have spent many, 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 many hours. So it's not like who's spent more hours to do whatever. But I think it was too rushed, and I couldn't make all the 8:00 in the morning meetings and the 10:00 in the morning meetings. And when I, I didn't know about the Collins Center when we first started this in December, or on November 22nd, just before, November whatever, before Thanksgiving and Christmas. Nobody, it's just, why are we rushing it? I think if we got to 112, we could have had a police station broken ground by now. I think we should have, Mr. Humes at the forum where we talked about Sarah's letter, said they didn't want to infringe on the ball fields, his words, they didn't want to infringe on the gas tanks, and they didn't want to infringe on the EMS. But I never heard any, like, real dollars, real hard evidence, why 112, because of visibility, it has the asphalt, it has utilities, and if you really look at it, you can probably move that building right there with the Sally Port in the back and everything else. I just don't understand, I haven't seen any hard evidence. I can understand the impound lot, I can understand the outbuilding, but we can break that into phases. So I'm just thinking, like I said, not allowed to say any names, but another speaker said, it's been too rushed. And Mr. Clark had said, what do we gain by more time? And I wish we would have had more time, because we would have been able to look at the, find out about the Clark or the Collins Center, we would have known about some of the other studies, we could have been more comfortable with our decision tonight. Yeah, you know what? What is it, like, you know, only fools rush in?
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. We've heard several points of view. Some of them are being a little repetitive in terms of it being too rushed and moving the site to the existing police station or fire station site. So please be mindful of that fact and present some new information. Thank you. I'm going to recognize Mr. Clark.
Just a couple of things, I would disagree, Ron Clark, 3 Bolton Street. I would disagree in the idea that this is being rushed. I think we've been waiting about 17 years to try to get the police station built. They've seen a North Carver Fire Station, South Carver Fire Station, Central Fire Station, library, town hall, new elementary school, new football field, and millions of dollars of renovations down at the high school, and they've sat back patiently and waited. And I think this committee has vetted this entirely. Other thing I'd like to mention is that when this first came up, many of the people who are passionate about the playground thought it would be a perfectly good idea to build the police station to the left of the current playground, right, so all this concern about the well field, I don't know what, where that came from, since it didn't exist right after the whole idea came up. Then we went to the King property, and now it's all about 112 Main Street. Well, using your wording, I believe there is a significant evidence that Member Ryan was mistaken when he talked about some of the Collins...
Please don't refer to him by name.
I'm sorry. Someone spoke previously. From Chief Doofly and Chief Mix, neither of them spoke to the Collins Center people. Neither of them sat down and did, was involved in any sort of needs analysis. There was no committee that was formed and sat with the Collins Center to determine the size and the needs of a new police station. And the Collins Center did not consider the reconfiguration of the Center Street, which is one of the items that they brought to, to the attention in the 2013 town meeting. Plus, as was noted earlier, this is not what the Collins Center normally does. They normally are hired to assist towns hiring town administrators or other offices within the town. This was a one-off, they've never done, they never did one before, and they haven't done one since. So that, basically, the police have waited, the, the most important thing I heard was public safety. From a public safety standpoint, there is no better site in the center of town for this to be located, fitting the configuration that they are looking for. And I completely support the police and the police chief in their recommendation, along with the building committee.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I'm going to recognize the woman on my left here.
Maria Azvestis, 23 Bates Pond Road. Couple of things. I just wanted to say that we've done, we've voted on this many different times, a town meeting, to purchase the land, knowing that there, it was supposed to be for a facility, I won't repeat, you know, the previous speaker, but there were things that were in place when we purchased that land, that it was supposed to be used for. We also voted and approved to put a conservation restriction on that property in 2014 at town meeting. We voted for the CPA funds to restore and rehabilitate the municipal playground, and in Article 20, Section D, we also voted for the requirements for Chapter 184 of the general laws, which is putting a conservation restriction on that property, on the Center Street property where the playground is now. We also hired, in 2017, Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, together with the townspeople. We put down, put together the town's comprehensive master plan, which again stated, the new police station was to be located at 112 Main Street. This plan was submitted to and accepted by the state. This is not this new town complex plan that has been floating around. This is the actual master plan for Carver. There are too many unknowns for this site. Again, you know, as far as the wells go, we don't know. Also, if the, if there's any realignment of Center Street, we're not sure what that's going to cost, and we don't, and it's not included in the cost estimate from Humes, from what I heard at one of the meetings. So whatever that cost is, is not included in the cost we have for it. We also have, what was I going to say? The fact that it is or possibly be Article 97 land, we're setting ourselves up for a legal battle if we don't fully vet that first. Also, if the state is going to penalize us for destroying something that we receive state matching funds for, I think that should be looked at more thoroughly. I also want to speak to the new site, the proposed site for the playground. The site will never be able to replicate what we have. The walking paths at the current location of the park are a quarter per mile. The walking paths proposed, quote, walking paths that are proposed are a few hundred... The walking paths proposed, quote, walking paths that are proposed are a few hundred yards. That's it. They're not going to be paved. They're not going to be within the 10-foot protection area fence. And they, also the fence, 10-foot fence is going to stay up for 10 years.
Ma'am, you're out of time.
I'm voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move the question.
Is there any new information that's going to be presented?
Yes, there is.
I have one in the middle I have to recognize before you.
Thank you.
Who believes?
Hi, Donna Foran. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that someone may have misspoken that spoke earlier. And the surface for the ADA compliance has been included in this. And if you take out your information, you'll see it in there. It's about $44,000, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foran. Ms. Hughes.
Thank you. So, I did want to point out a couple of things that I think, a little bit of misinformation here. All the studies, the 2010 Reinhardt Associates Study, the 2013 Collins Center for Public Management Study, by the way, that's what they do for a living. They help towns locate municipal buildings, just so you know. And the master plan study, all of those, not the master plan, but those two studies, and again, in 2018, needs assessments were done. In fact, the MRI report in 2018 cited the Collins Center study. I'd also like to point out that they very, Collins Center very specifically noted the problems with Center Street. In our, the town meeting on November 12th, 2013, the two folks from the Collins Center came down and spoke to us. You can watch it on YouTube, video, wherever you want to see it. It was there. They named all the reasons why the Center Street site was wrong. And no one has mentioned here tonight that it's not just the Zone 2 that might need to be expanded. First of all, the reason it might need to be expanded is because it's not that the DEP comes down and does a study. What they do is they come down and do a pump test to make sure that you don't need to increase the capacity of your well. For those who don't know, I used to be a conservation agent here in town for many years. And so, they need to come down and do a pump test. They told us, a friend, Maria, in fact, and I went up to DEP last Thursday. We talked to a person there in the Water Resources Department. They haven't assessed it at all since the affordable and senior housing went in there and now the fire department's using it for training. So, for all we know, that thing is way beyond capacity. And I just want people to understand that there's not just the wellhead, but there's an interim wellhead protection area that goes out 750 feet. And no one's addressed that at all. The other thing that hasn't been addressed is that on the December 3rd public forum, one of our selectmen, who's also on the building committee, kept repeating over and over that the reason the playground has to go on the Center Street site is because otherwise our town hall complex plan won't work. And you can look at that one on YouTube and our cable station as well. So, in my book, this whole thing is being done, we're designing a police station to fit a town hall complex plan. If that's what folks want, then that's, that's fine. But I, for one, did not vote, when I voted for the police station last year, I did not vote for a town hall complex plan that is actually being designed now and money's being spent on it. And I just, I just think that's wrong. I think there are too many issues on Center Street, potential legal issues, well issues, traffic issues that have been mentioned in the past and aren't being addressed now. So, I urge you to vote no. But we are, all of us, even those who don't want this to happen this way, we are.
Time's up, Ms. Hughes.
We support our police department.
Move the question.
Point of order. Please take your point of order.
Um, according to Robert Scholz, if the question is called and seconded, then it automatically goes to a vote. Is that correct?
It's, it's up to my discretion. If I'm still hearing new information, I would like to allow.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to repeat that if there's new information only, we'd like to have people come up to the mic. So, we've heard several opinions and points. We've heard a lot about the wellhead. We've heard a lot about the Collins study. And we've heard the police station building advisory committee answered a lot of questions before we started. So, please refrain from repeating previous comments. So, I have one on the right.
Thank you. Matt Spiewkowski, 24 Priscilla Mullins Way. Just to maybe a little bit more.
Speak up into the microphone, please.
Sure. Sorry. Matt Spiewkowski, 24 Priscilla Mullins Way. The playground has been talked about a little bit tonight, but just to add some additional colors, some things that weren't addressed were about the ADA compliance. I think there's a little bit of confusion there. The current playground in its form, although it's the location, we could debate, you know, the validity there, it is, may technically meet some outdated ADA requirements, but it is certainly not ADA friendly for a lot of reasons. We talked about wheelchairs pushing across. I've had to do it myself, strollers, walkers. The other thing that people don't consider is it's not an inclusive playground for kids who don't have mobile, full mobility. So, there's not, there's no ramping systems. So, those children are actually excluded from playing with their peers because of the way the current playground is designed. They can't use any of the apparatus. So, the playground in its current form, in my opinion, is not a valid reason to, to keep because I think it's outdated and needs to be replaced.
Mr. Bellman.
Robert Bellman, 26 Gate Street. I just want to question, there was a comment about the 911 system costing a million dollars. In Appendix L, where is the 911 system in that appendix? How much does it cost to do?
Okay. So, who's your, who's your question directed at, sir?
I'm asking the members here of, how much does it cost to move the 911 system? All right. My personal preference is.
I can answer that question if you want.
Go right ahead.
They'll move it once. So, if you build a new facility, like the one that's suggested on Center Street, 911 will move it for free. If you move into a temporary facility and back, we're going to pay for it. I did this in the town I worked for. I am telling you, it costs a tremendous amount of money. It's not just the 911 phone lines, it's a lot more.
I'm going to have to cut this off because the funding is related to Article 4 and not Article 2. So, we're just talking about the location of the police station building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman.
Move the question. Can we move the question, please, Mr. Moderator?
Okay. I asked for only new information. We have one more person standing at a mic who is assuring me that they have new information. And so, I'm going to recognize this one last person and then we're going to move it. What's that? Is that a point of order?
Can I go?
Oh.
I'm Marsha Petty, 186 Main, and I'd like to speak as an elder. Hard to believe, but I'm a 74-year-old native of Carver. And one of the only perks I feel as I get as a taxpayer is walking the paths around the playground for my health and bringing my grandchildren there who love it. And as another grandfather said, it is the most beautiful place in the world. And we're hearing again and again, can of worms, legality, environmental.
This is getting repetitive.
And, yes, we're getting repetitive. But what I'm wondering about is why is 112 Main going to be gaping hole?
I'm going to stop you for one moment. Okay. You need to state something new.
Well, I'm wondering the TBD of the 112 Main, which has been prioritized.
We've already talked about the TBD location as well.
What is the future holding for us? And so, I just want to summarize, please save money. Please save this irreplaceable gem of a playground. It cannot be put anywhere else. Vote no, please.
Yes, we're asking when you call a question.
Okay. So, I've mentioned that that would be the last speaker. I'm going to hold to that. We've had a motion to move the question.
Can we do a secret ballot, please?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Unless I hear any objections, I'm going to allow one more speaker. Chief Weston.
Sorry, I don't like to have my backs to as many people as I have to. I owe this to our police department and I owe this to our police chief. First, I want to recognize the hard work of our building station building committee. Having projects of this size and scope that I've completed in my career, I fully appreciate all the work that they've done. Chief Bill Harriman is one of the finest individuals that I've ever met and is of the highest integrity I've ever known. As the Carver Fire Chief, I normally sit on the sidelines at these town meetings. However, I'm passionate about making sure everyone in this audience is protected by Carver's public safety. With that, I've been a person who's involved in public safety for over 30 years. And I want to be fully clear that I fully support our police chief, our police officers, our dispatchers, and our building committee. After listening to the presentations conducted tonight by professional design engineers, I accept their findings. I too was surprised. I accept their findings. I understand they are not looking for what is best for today for public safety, but they look 30 to 50 years out and that's what I care about. I believe in a building a facility one time and you build it right. The police department should be located on the site that gives them everything they need for 30 to 50 years in the future. Studies and plans are subject to change as needs change. Your police department's needs have changed over the years. The plans that we should not focus on are not from 1998 or 2005 or 2010, 13, or even 2018, but they should be from the ones that have most recently been conducted by professional designers. That's a plan that you as taxpayers have already paid almost $100,000 for to have completed. It includes a professional needs assessment study for the police department. Your police officers supported it in the building department, committee has, excuse me, has supported it. As an example, in my 20-year period with the fire station, numerous studies have been done on the new fire headquarters. I am extremely proud how our facility turned out, but it looks nothing like it was proposed in any of the studies. Nor does it face the right, the same direction that it was proposed? Does it function the way it was intended? Or does it look the way it was in any of the studies? I will give you a word of caution that the police station is now at a 30% design phase part of the project, meaning that any delay in moving to a different site is going to cost you as taxpayers. So, understand that. That comes down to design changes, inflation, and when the project will be put out to bid. We are extremely fortunate to have a police chief, the caliber of Chief Doofly. If Chief Doofly has a vision for his police department, his police officers, and his staff, we need to support that vision. I ask you to support him in this project. Thank you.
Hold your applause. Thank you. Mr. Bellman, are you making your motion?
Yeah, I made a motion for a secret ballot, please. Hold. No.
What's that? Yep. I have a motion made and seconded for going to a secret ballot vote. Now, I want to, I want to point out that as I stated in the beginning, our intention was to go to a hand count on this. So, a motion has been made and seconded to go from a hand count to a secret ballot count. Is there any debate on the motion?
It's secret.
Who seconded?
We have folks asking who was the second. Okay. Mrs. Ryan and Mr. Shea. Seeing no debate, we're going to go directly to a vote. This would require a majority vote. So, all those in favor of going from a hand count to a ballot count, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The noes have it. Motion does not carry. So, at this point, we're going to move it to a vote. It's going to be a hand count vote. So, keep in mind that when I call for the count, hold your card up high in the air and leave it in the air until I ask you to put it down. Okay. So, all those in favor of the proposed motion, I'm going to reread the motion, is I move that the town vote to approve Article 2 as set forth in the warrant. What's that? Oh, okay. Excellent. So, all those in favor? You may put your hands down. Now, all those opposed. Here, put your hands down. Okay, quiet down. Motion passes with a vote of 261 to 77.
Mr. Moderator? I move.
We have a motion.
I'd like to move that we reconsider Article 2.
Second.
If a motion and second to reconsider Article 2, is there any debate? Gentlemen, are you, are you standing to speak and debate of the motion to reconsider?
Well, I was going to do the same as Selectman Dunham did, but from the Police Station Advisory Building Committee, we appreciate your patience. We appreciate your concern for our public safety department. And I, I hope going forward, we can mend some fences together because this was too disruptive for any of us and us old folks don't like disruptions. So, so thank you again, but reach out to our neighbors and, and thank them whether they voted for this or not. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Hold your applause. Thank you.
Can I just say thank you too? Thank you to everybody in the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Doofly. Okay. Just to clarify, just to clarify, we have a motion on the table and it's been seconded to reconsider Article 2. This is just to, to either bring it back up for discussion or not bring it back up for discussion. So, if you vote in favor of the motion to reconsider, that means that we will bring the article back up for discussion. It does not necessarily mean that we'll vote on it again, but it would open it back up for discussion. If you vote no on the motion to reconsider, then we will not reconsider and bring the article back up for discussion and it cannot be moved to reconsider again. Okay? So, I want to make sure that everybody's absolutely clear on that. So, seeing no additional, sir, are you coming forward to speak and debate on the motion reconsider? Okay. Apparently, that was supposed to be obvious and I didn't know that. Okay. So, on the motion to reconsider, this would require a majority vote. So, all those in favor? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion fails, so we will not be reconsidering Article Two. Okay. I understand that some folks are leaving the room, but I would like to ask them that they do so as quietly as possible, so we can consider our proceedings. Please quiet down. Thank you. We're going to move on to Article Three. Article Three is called reallocation of funds for the police station. Do I have a motion on Article Three?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we approve Article Three as shown on the screen.
Okay. I have a motion and seconded to approve Article Three as shown on the screen. This motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen was five to zero, and the Finance Committee was six to zero on this article. I have a speaker who is going to present on this article before we move into debate. That speaker is Mr. Milonowski, Town Administrator.
Good evening, everyone, and I will try to move quickly through this article, given the time of, of the night. This article, Article Three, has a, a very lengthy informational summary that I'm not going to go through in great detail, but it, it provides the background for this. When we first started the building, the police station building project, I'm going to bring you to this slide here. This is the slide that you saw last year at town meeting, and with that, what I'm circling right here is that we were estimating the building is going to be about eleven thousand square feet at about four hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Everything that you can't read here on the left where my cursor is pointing to, this is a breakdown of what every size room was anticipated to be, to, to, that was needed. And again, this was done before we had the user needs analysis that Mr. Hume spoke to. When that user needs analysis was completed, we ended up coming up with a twelve thousand three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, which is an estimated cost in our preliminary design about four hundred and sixty-six dollars a square foot, plus an outbuilding of twenty-five hundred thousand square, twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet. This is in your appendix, Appendix L, I believe it is, that breaks down the site cost, breaks down the building cost, and the outbuildings. While I'm showing you these, is to show that when this was presented in the yellow here, this was the last time that we were anticipating doing any additional bonding. You heard from earlier speakers, Mr. Johnson and others, that this is going to be done within the tax base. We, we got approval last year borrowing four point nine million dollars. We knew the project was going to be more than four point nine million dollars. We're anticipating it costs about seven point six million dollars for the total project. But, those additional funds were going to come out of the existing capital outlay budget over the next couple of years, or other one-time funds. And again, what I'm highlighting here, circling on the screen, that's what that says last year, is the capital outlay committee is committed to coming up with other one-time funds for that. So, with that, three things are happening, going back to the article. One is that with the elementary school project, the building committee has been extremely successful, and we anticipate having in excess of one million dollars of surplus from that project. That money is not going to be available until this winter, until it goes through the review by MSBA. Once that happens, we plan on bringing that to town meeting next April for your approval, so we can reutilize that money to go into this project. In the meantime, we have two other projects, or two other funding sources, that we're not in a position to move forward with them, one now and the other because we don't need to anymore. The three hundred thousand dollars that you see in this article was approved last year at town meeting on Article Three. This was to extend the water line down, the DEP was anticipating we were going to have to extend. However, our licensed site professional has done multiple mercury tests and multiple testing of wells and determined that it's no longer necessary. So, where we had allocated three hundred thousand dollars at last year's town meeting to extend that water line, we no longer need that water line extended. Therefore, town meeting tonight is being asked to reallocate that three hundred thousand dollars to the police station project because it's no longer needed for the water line extension. The second is this one point one million dollars for the library project, and Dave Sigintoff, our Director of Operation and Maintenance, is in charge of this project. He was given an old study when he took over the position that called for, in essence, ripping off the roof of the library and replacing all the HVAC systems in there. That's what was presented to town meeting, that's what you approved last year at town meeting. The reason for that is that HVAC system is coming to its, end of its useful life. It does need to be replaced. However, Dave is able to keep that system up and running for a few more years, and after he got into the position and started to looking at it more, in, in more detail, he's determined that there's a better way of doing that project than ripping the roof off the library. Anybody that's driven by the library, you know that's a big, tall, big roof, that, you know, once you, you break, once you cut open a roof, there's always problems after that. So, he is coming up with alternative ways to do that. With that, he plans on phasing in the project over the next couple of years. In phasing that project in, we will be able to build those costs into our capital outlay budget. And again, so that project will be done, it will be done in phases, but for the next year, year and a half, he doesn't need the one point one million dollars money where we need it for the police station. So, we're asking for town meeting to abandon that project now, move that money to the police station, and next year at the annual town meeting, we're going to be coming back with a phase plan for solving the library issues. And again, I want to make sure everyone understands, we are not giving up doing the repairs in the library, they need to be done. There's just a better, more efficient, more effective way of doing it in a phased approach that will be funded through our capital outlay budget. And with that, that is Article Three that we'd be asking your approval for.
Thank you. I appreciate the brevity. All right. So, now that the presentation's been given, I'll open the article up for discussion. Seeing no motion to the mics, we're going to move this to a vote. This will take a two-thirds vote. Restate the motion, it's I move that the town approve Article Three in the amounts and for the purposes set forth on the screen. This is...
You've got somebody there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
My pleasure.
Again, Debbie Marshall Hewlett for Brewster Ave. I just wanted to address respectfully, Mr. Milonowski, the DEP water line extension. That water line extension, there was what's called a critical exposure pathway, a CEP in a private drinking water well. So, any measurable detection, and it was 1-4 dioxine. It's a persistent contaminant in the environment. Bottled water has been provided to, I think it's three homes since February of last year, and Mr. Milonowski's correct, last year we voted here at, at the town meeting to approve that water line extension. Now, that's not necessarily something that, that Mass DEP requires. That's an option that the town can do because these homes are on private drinking water. So, I know that testing is still being done. I would just caution the, the folks in town that that's not necessarily a done deal right now, that that water line is not needed. That's my understanding. So, when you look at, you look at the, the numbers for the other couple of items in this, the three hundred thousand is much less than, than the other one, for sure. That's the smaller amount, but I would still caution, and there is a licensed site professional on the project, they are the ones who submit the information to Mass DEP, and then Mass DEP oversees and approves the work that's been done. So, again, the bottled water, for those couple of folks, those three homes that are being provided, I'm sure that that's a, a big concern for them. And that's all I wanted to point out, that it's, it's not necessarily something that is, you know, no longer needed right at this point in time. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Bellman.
So, maybe we should not use that three hundred thousand dollars right now with this information that we have now, that, how much are we spending for water for these residents at this point?
Mr. Moderator, do you?
If I could address that in, Dave Sigintoff, are you, if we can have Dave come up here? Again, there has been updated information on the testing. Right now, the wells are not producing any 1-4 dioxine, and Dave, if you can address this in more detail?
Yes, we have engaged these services. We have someone that is monitoring those wells now, and the last, I don't remember, the last year of so rounds of testing, there is no more of that chemical present in the wells.
Then we're no longer providing water anymore?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Seeing no movement to the mics, we're going to move this to a vote. The motion is I move that the town approve Article Three in the amounts and for the purposes set forth on the screen. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries by two-thirds vote. Moving right along. Article Five. It was meant to be a joke.
Article Four, can I do Article Moderator?
Oh, Article Four, I'm sorry. Yeah. See, I, I was trying to get you guys out of here quicker. Article Four, appropriation of funds for Phase One Recreation Complex. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator.
Is there a point of order?
I, I move that the town approve Article Four A, Article Four B, Article Four C, and Article Four D in the amount and for the purposes set forth in the warrant. Sorry, I didn't say my name. I'm Bob Bentley, Sixty Wyndham Road. I'm also the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee.
Welcome, Mr. Bentley. So, I just want to make a clarification on, on how we'll, we'll handle this. So, there's been a motion made to approve Four A, Four B, Four C, and Four D. I'm going to open it for presentations and then discussions, and then when we vote on this, it's going to require a majority vote, but we're going to vote on each section individually. Okay? So, with that said, I have some speakers to present to you. Mr. Bob?
Second.
Oh, was there a second? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yep, so we have one.
I was wondering if you wanted a second.
So, we have a motion made and seconded, and now we're going to open it for presentation by Mr. Bentley, Ms. Ross, Mr. Linden, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Hoffman, and Ms. Tully.
Mr. Moderator.
You can present.
I can do it from here.
You are? Okay.
The community, the Recreation Committee brought this proposal to the Community Preservation Committee specifically so that they, that this project could get done. When the committee took a look at it, we, it was presented to us in four different phases, and, and we felt that it would be the most prudent, the, the best way to present it to the town meeting would, would be to present it in the four fa, four different phases, so that you, the town meeting can actually vote on the individual parts of the project. The Part A is, is the two hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars for the playground. Part B is a hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars for the parking, parking area. Part C is eighty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty for the infields, and Part D is ninety thousand for other site improvements, which are a new well, irrigation upgrades, concession, and toilet upgrades, and site lighting. We felt that it would be best to provide it that way, so that the town meeting, particularly with the state of flux that we are in, in terms of the, the whole playground issue, the town meeting would have the, the, the most say, the best say for everyone. So, at this point, I'd like to turn the float over to Mary Ross, who is the chairman of the Recreation Committee, who is going to explain the project itself.
I'll be brief, I promise. Mary Ross, Forty Great Meadow Drive, Chairman of the Recreation Committee. In November, the Recreation Committee decided to apply to the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, for funds to renovate the four ball fields at the King property behind the police station. In December, we were given the task to relocate and recreate a municipal playground for our town. We began with a very well-attended Saturday morning meeting, at which time we discussed possible locations, potential play structures for new playground, and the process we would follow, including public input, children's opinions included, and full transparency at all of our meetings. The large group then walked the property in the pouring rain to determine the best space for a playground, park, and walking and bike trails. A great deal of open and honest communication later occurred at our seven public meetings in January and February. Our proposal to the CPC was presented, asking for the six hundred thousand dollars that Bob just mentioned, to accomplish Phase One of a ten-year plan to renovate and upgrade the King property, establishing a sports complex the entire town can enjoy and be proud of. The design of the complex may evolve and change a bit in the next ten years, depending on the needs of the town at the time. We're confident that this first phase will continue to have the best interests of our young and old and those in between. The Recreation Committee will continue to work tirelessly to achieve this goal. Our design plans will include more ADA-compliant structures, surfaces, and we plan to enlist the advice of children and their families on final decisions on play structures. We all want what is best for the town moving forward. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Tom Linden, our landscape architect. You ready?
Let me know when you want to begin. Yeah, that'll be the first one, yeah. Good evening. I'm Tom Linden from Linden Landscape Architects in Connecticut. As Mary said, we began working with the Recreation Committee in early January with, the initial task was a master plan for the King property, and then the playground portion of it got added to that master plan for the entire property. The Recreation Commission's task was to try to find a place on the King property that the, the playground might fit in. So, we started on that very cold Saturday morning, January fourth, with the Recreation Committee's open forum that they held for, we were there for a good two and a half, three hours. There were probably forty or fifty people that came, different sports groups, citizens just expressing, what we were looking to find out at that meeting was, was what people thought about what was at the King property now, what issues they had with any of the facilities, what improvements they wanted to make, what they still needed to have there, what was there that didn't need to be there anymore, and any future things that, that might go on, on the entire property. This whole thing wasn't just about the playground, it's the entire property, a master plan for the whole site. So, what we did as design professionals after we left that meeting was we went back and came up with different schemes for how to lay out the major elements, a softball field, a playground, a parking lot, on that property, and came up with several different schemes. We went back the following week, presented that to the committee and the audience of citizens that came to that meeting to look at what we had developed. We had open discussion, review, comments, we spoke about this, what if you tried that? What if we tried that? We went through that process for four weeks in a row, continually developing the plan and taking the comments. We'd come back the next week with a couple different options for how to do things. The softball fields killed us. We went through seven different options of how to solve the softball problem. So, we continually did that week after week with input from the public and input from the committee for what you want at your recreation facility. We just provided the guidelines for how to make it all work and how things would work together. We finally came up towards the end of January, beginning of February, with a final master plan, which is what you see on the screen behind us. This was all based on just some of the background as to how this came to be, was the key things that we found out about your existing facility was basically six big things. All of the infields at all four, four ball fields are constantly wet. It rains, can't get on the fields for three, four, five... It rains, can't get on the fields for three, four, five days afterwards. You're dumping a ton of that dry, quick dry stuff into the infield mix, which ruins the infield mix and causes it to drain even more poorly over time as it builds up. There was an orientation issue with two of the fields, the Little League minor field and the farthest softball field out to the back, which isn't on this plan. This is the final master plan. But two of the fields are oriented so that in the afternoon, batters are staring directly into the sun. It's the wrong orientation for the field. So each league wanted to correct that problem. The biggest problem in my mind is parking. Right now, it's just open season for where you find a place to park in there. There's not a defined parking space. There's parking in between the two Little League fields where kids are getting out of cars, trying to go over to this field, trying to go to that field. Softball players are trying to get down to there, and there's cars backing in and out. It's a pedestrian vehicle nightmare in there. Couple of the other things is the concession stand and restroom building has seen better days. It needs some upgrades, especially for ADA compliance. The irrigation system needs kind of regular repair, but right now it's only running on one well when it used to run on two wells. So there's not sufficient water to properly irrigate the fields with the one well. That's why the plan includes adding another well. And then there was the playground, how to fit the playground into all of this stuff so that it would all work together as one recreation complex. So the solution is the overall master plan that you see. The idea was, is that we will rebuild all of the infills, complete with new material, proper under drainage so that they don't hold water. Two of the fields get, well, the Little League minor field gets reoriented into the proper orientation so that the players aren't staring into the sun. The solution to the softball issue was the two softball fields, one of them was in the improper orientation, but at the same time, those outfield's overlapped. So if somebody on this field hit a ball, it made it to the infield of the other field. It was hard to play two games at once. So what the softball league finally came up with after the whole series of things was, they would have rather have one softball field that works perfectly for them and does everything they need to do, and they can reschedule their league games around that. So we came up with one softball field and the orientation that they asked for. It's completely fenced in to keep balls from flying out into other conflicting things that are going on in the park. It will fit a soccer field on the inside of the fencing so that it can be used for soccer. There's also space outside, now that it's one softball field in the corner, for smaller sized soccer fields for the under-six, under-eight, under-10 age groups. So in terms of softball, it's flexible. The playground, we placed central to the front side of the complex. It's near the concession building. It, let me see if I can do this. So the playground will go in the middle. So the concession building, the Little League major field stays in the location it is now. It'll just get a brand-new rebuilt infield. It gets fenced off from what will become the new parking so that there will be no vehicles allowed in that area where they park now and they're in between kids running around. It gets fenced off. It's a secured area for the new playground area. What you see on this plan shows playground equipment. That has always just been met, and we said this every time we met and talked about it. That's the exact existing equipment that you have at the playground at the library. It was placed in here to show that all of the equipment over there would fit in this configuration for a new playground, so you'd be getting the same thing. Not that we're going to move all that stuff over here, or not that we're going to recreate exactly what was over there. This playground has not begun to be designed yet. If funding happens, then the Recreation Committee, we will start immediately, they'll start selecting equipment, getting input from people. There was a little girl at our first couple of meetings, she told us exactly what she wanted. We were sitting there and we're talking about how water drains, this, that, and the other thing, and all of a sudden, her hand would go up. "I want a seesaw." She told us what she wanted. So they're going to get that input and put the right kind of equipment that people in town want to have. But this was just to show that you will get the same space that you currently have. In the overall master plan, when the Little League minor field gets relocated, you'll also have this big, huge area in the corner there. You'll get about 50% more space as the whole master plan gets phased in over the years. In terms of, I'll just do it while I'm here talking on the playground. In terms of safety of the playground being in the middle, in between the, in between fields, for this Phase I, this Little League field stays the same. There will be a 10-foot safety fence along this foul line to catch foul balls from going in there. From the Little League major, there will be a fence on the outside of the existing four-foot fence that's there now so that kids can still hit the home run ball over the four-foot fence, parents can sit outside the fence. There will be a fence behind that. So the playground area will be collected from the stray ball that flies into it. In terms of safety surfacing, which was some of the comments from the last go-around here, again, this playground has not been designed yet. It will be designed to be ADA compliant. The gentleman who talked about how the Fi Bar stuff is, it meets the code, but it's terrible to try to get a wheelchair across, he's absolutely right, but it meets the code. There will be, the goal is to have rubber surfacing in at least part of the playground to make the major access points completely accessible. Cost-wise, you can't afford it, but that will be looked at as the design process goes. We will have the budget of this number, and that's the number that we will have to work to when we design that playground. The parking area, the playground and the parking area are the two biggest things that the Recreation Committee wants to accomplish. And because putting the playground in here takes that existing parking nightmare out, we've created a parking area, obviously, as you see over here, that will be a defined parking area, like a regular parking lot, instead of just whoever the first car that comes in sets off the chain of events that turns into unorganized parking. So this will be an organized parking lot. Then there will be money in the other category, which will be improvements to the concession building, and especially the restrooms at the concession building, which are not ADA compliant and need to be. There will be the additional well. And then this plan will also have areas for benches, the grass picnic area right outside the concession stand so that not everything is pavement or gravel. The entire master plan, once it's finalized, will include a path system that will give you ADA accessibility to all of your facilities, which you currently don't have. You're required to have ADA accessible routes to all facilities, which means there needs to be an ADA accessible path all the way out to the infield of that far back softball field, and there isn't. That all gets included in the master plan. The entire outside loop is a half a mile, so you'll have a half-mile walking path, a half-mile path for kids to ride their bikes on. And everything will be ADA accessible. So we've got the funding portion of this. There was a cost estimate in the final master plan of just shy of $750,000 to complete Phase I of this project, which is what you see on the screen behind us. Repairing the two softball infills, the two Little League infills, moving the, or creating a new playground and doing the parking, and then the wells in the concession building. We asked CPC for $600,000. The amount of money that the cost estimate is based on, is based on a prevailing wage job, as if this were to go out to public bid as a project. It will likely be done in smaller pieces where there will be donations, volunteers will donate time to do some of the labor, donation of materials, sponsorship opportunities, so that we feel that the $600,000 is the amount of money that we need to ask for. So I guess just to summarize, we came up with a master plan that was based on input from the public over a series of six or seven meetings where they critiqued my design. I didn't tell them what to do. I told them what they could accomplish. They critiqued and told me what they didn't like about this one and what we liked about that one to come up with the final plan. This is the plan we're asking for funding for right now. It improves safety by separating pedestrians from vehicles. It improves ADA compliance, which you don't have. This will be ADA compliance for all of these new facilities. The long range, the master plan takes all of it. In the future, I believe the intention is that in the future, this will go into your regular capital improvements monies and be built in little pieces as money becomes available when Mike does his magic. But this Phase I is the key piece to get the King property going. So that's why they went to CPC to ask the money, because they want to do it and get it done now while the funds are there and available. That's it.
Do we have more for the presentation?
I'm not going to present anything. I have like two things to say, I promise. I just wanted to acknowledge, I know that there were, that this, oh, I'm sorry. Nicole Tully on the Rec Committee, and I wanted to just acknowledge for everyone here who had a really hard time with struggling with, you know, the decision that had to be made tonight about the Houghell Community Playground. That wasn't part of what we were originally going to CPC for, but it became the priority. And we want you guys to know that our biggest goal, our most foremost goal, is to make sure that we take into account all the sacrifices that the community made with that playground to improve the situation and acknowledge everything. So aside from the fact that I'm really excited that it's going to move forward with the police station, if this goes through tonight, I really encourage you, rather than Facebook, come to our meetings. Come to our meetings and like talk to us, give us input. This is like really early preliminary designs. I've never done anything like this. We're working with professionals, but we need the community's input. It's really hard to walk away from our meetings and hear all this stuff on Facebook and say, it would have been helpful to hear that in the meeting so that we could understand that and process all that. So we hope we get your support, but come to the meetings too because we really need help.
Thank you. All right.